All right, welcome to the May County Commission Meeting. The first order of business tonight is invocation by Commissioner Bethard and pledge to the flag by Commissioner Wilson, please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and all that you have given us. Please bless this meeting tonight and guide our hearts and minds as we make the decisions that will affect those in Williamson County. Be a source of guidance, dear Heavenly Father, and impart your supreme wisdom on our activities tonight so that ultimately, as in all things, thy will be done. Please continue to bless this county, this state, and this country, and bless those who fight to protect her. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Like to take a moment to welcome some of our security personnel, Tracy Schwartz, Bernie Schwartz, Andy Ogles, Lynn Sutton, Keith Chapman, Sheriff Long, and there's several others here, and appreciate y'all being here. Next item is roll call. If you push your present button. Record the roll, Ms. Anderson.
I have twenty-one present, three absent, Commissioner Cook.
Absent, Commissioner Ricky Jones absent, and Travis Hawkins absent.
All right, Commissioner Cook called this afternoon, and she's under the weather. Commissioner Jones is traveling with his baseball team, and we wish the Yellow Jackets all success in their tournament, so. Next item is approval of minutes of the March fourteenth County Commission Meeting, which copies were mailed to you. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Little, Commissioner Chalafant the Second, any changes? All in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Next agenda item, introduction and acceptance of Highway Commission Minutes, and those copies were mailed to you. Entertain a motion. Mr. Wilson. Mr. Jones the Second, any changes? All in favor? Opposed? Next item we have is Citizens Communication. If you'll come up and state your name and your address, we ask that you keep it professional and first people I have is a team, Gina Fabry and Rhonda Atkins.
Are we good? Can you hear me?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, I'm kinda nervous, so I've never done anything like this before. My name is Rhonda Atkins, and I have three children in the Williamson County School System. They're at Edmondson and Brentwood Middle, and they're in kindergarten, third grade, and seventh grade.
Rhonda, would you give your address for the record, please?
Oh, ninety-six twenty-nine Millsford Court, Brentwood.
Okay.
My name's Gina Fabry, and I live at four forty Autumn Lake Trail in Franklin. I have two children in the Williamson County School System. They're in kindergarten and third grade.
Thank you.
We're here to discuss the importance of having a full-time nurse in each school. This week happens to be Food Allergy Awareness Week. Both of our children have food allergies, and mine also has asthma. Actually, sixty million people in the United States have asthma. That was an unbelievable fact that I realized last night. Food allergies are the fifth-leading chronic disease in the United States among all ages, the third-most chronic disease among children under eighteen years old. It's a growing problem. From nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and two, the number of people with peanut allergies doubled. Up to twenty-five percent of all peanut and tree nut reactions happen at school for the very first time, and that's why it's so important to have a nurse there. More than two hundred deaths occur each year due to food allergies. Asthma is the number-one cause of school absenteeism among children, accounting for more than fourteen million total missed days of school last year alone. Each day, eleven Americans die from asthma. The death rate for children under nineteen years old has increased by nearly eighty percent since nineteen eighty. There are more than four thousand deaths due each year to asthma, but with proper care, having a nurse at school, with them getting their breathing treatments and everything, they'll still be with us. In addition, asthma is indicated as a contributing factor to seven thousand more deaths every year. It's very important to me and to Gina for our children to be able to attend school. We could homeschool our children, but we feel that the social aspect of school is so important to them. If the nurse is not there, our kids can't go to schools in Williamson County because it's just too dangerous. At Edmondson Elementary, there are forty-five children that quit breathing to a school. We have thirty-eight schools in Williamson County. I think it's safe to assume that there's seventeen hundred children with food allergies in Williamson County. If you add in asthma, it goes up to three thousand. Two years ago, I went to testify before Congress representing the Food Allergy and Anaphylactic Network, and I wasn't as nervous as I am now, in that act of law that it allows children with food allergies to attend school. I was there to tell them how we handle food allergies at Edmondson. While there, I heard a horrific story from a mother of a kindergartner in East Tennessee. The school her child went to did not have a food allergy action plan, and they did not have a school nurse. The mom enrolled her child in kindergarten and told the child's teacher and the secretary that her child was allergic to peanuts. One day, both those people were absent from school. The substitute teacher gave the children at snack time cookies, and she did not know that one of the children had a food allergy. A food allergy is best described when thought of this way: Milk and nuts to my child is like arsenic to me. If I get a little bit of arsenic, I'm probably gonna die. If my child gets a little bit of peanuts or milk, she's probably gonna die. Symptoms may be as mild as rashes, hives, itching, or swelling, or as severe as having trouble breathing, wheezing, loss of consciousness, or death. Now back to my story. The kindergartner from East Tennessee died. She died in front of eighteen other kindergartners in her class. Had a school nurse and a food allergy action plan been in place, she would have been in third grade today. Since Brianna has been diagnosed, I've tried to educate people around her how to keep her safe and show them how easy it is. My current goal is to try to get all Williamson County to mirror Edmondson Elementary's food allergy plan. My husband was a contestant on The Celebrity Apprentice, and he has raised millions of dollars for the Food Allergy and Anaphylactic Network to help them find a cure for food allergies. Please don't let a child die on our watch. We have to have a medical professional in each school every day, not just one day out of the week. Eight foods account for ninety percent of all food allergic reactions. They're milk, egg, peanut, tree nut, fish, shellfish, wheat, and soy. Some of you may think a child with food allergies should not attend school. It is not as hard as you think to keep a child safe at school. It just takes education, a plan, and a school nurse to orchestrate the program. The program's simple. People around Brianna all know what she's allergic to, and other children that have food allergies. The kids wash their hands after every meal. At lunch, no one on either side of her has something that she's allergic to, and at snack time, they eat at their desk instead of walking around the class, and then they wash their hands after they're done. Nurse Connie, which is the nurse at Edmondson, noticed that all the food allergy classes had lower absences due to illnesses because they washed their hands so much during the day, so we better attendants. She makes sure that the food allergy policies at Edmondson are followed. When Brianna thinks she might be having a reaction, she goes to see Nurse Connie to assess the situation. Who will be responsible for that if we eliminate nurses from the school? What if she has a reaction when the nurse is at another school? The unfortunate thing about food allergies is there is no cure. One in seventeen children under the age of six quit breathing to a food. That's one in every kindergarten class. Brianna has gone to see Nurse Connie more for asthma than she has food allergies. One in fifteen Americans suffer from asthma. Asthma is the most chronic condition among children. Nurse Connie gives Brianna breathing treatments and listens to her chest twice a day during the change of season. Who will do that when she's not there? Not only does the school nurse keep children like Brianna safe, but they are also critical in detecting the signs of domestic violence, chronic illness, injuries, and emergencies, communicable diseases, obesity, substance use and abuse, and the list goes on. According to the Association of School Nurses, they recommend that school districts should employ at least one nurse per seven hundred and fifty students. In Williamson County, that would be one nurse per school. After a child's home, school represents the second-most influential environment in a child's life. Don't allow a child in Williamson County to lose that wonderful experience because one of the wealthiest school districts in the United States can't have a nurse at each school. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on Citizens Communication is Mark Shore.
My name is Mark Shore. I live at eleven thirty-eight West Main Street in Franklin. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here again in front of you. I wanted to share with you this evening in particular that this is National Tourism Week as well. I think everything has a week, and it's good to raise the awareness of all of those different things that we need to support, but obviously with my role here in Williamson County, tourism is at the top of that list. We, each year, more than two hundred and sixty-four million dollars in expenditures are left here in Williamson County by visitors to our county. That equates to about five point eight million in local taxes, plus another two point four million in lodging taxes that are collected. So we are very strongly supportive of our industry and work hard to promote it so that we can continue to see the economic vitality of tourism in our community, so that you all have the tax dollars to put towards the funds and the programs that you need. One of the things that I did want to share with you this evening, we, on April twentieth, launched what we think is probably one of the first in the nation. We have an iPad walking tour for downtown Franklin. What makes it unique for us is that we actually have iPads available for rent at the visitor's center for those visitors who may not have an iPad. In the first three days, we had more than four hundred downloads of the new application on the iTunes Store. It is a free application for folks to be able to download, and the beauty of it is we believe that it allows our citizens who have iPads to be able to download it and become basically tour guides for us. We know that forty-seven percent of all of our visitors are visiting friends and relatives, and I just have to point out, this was unplanned, but I'm gonna point to Commissioner Ford here, who showed me that he's already downloaded the app onto his iPad, so very proud of y'all for stepping up. But again, I wanted to keep it short and simple. This is National Tourism Week. We believe strongly that it contributes an amazing amount to this community. We are number seven out of the ninety-five counties in Tennessee, and we hope to keep it strong and keep it in that spot, so thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next person on Citizens Communication, Bruce Bowden.
How are you? It's Bruce Bowden, and I live six oh four Cheshire Circle in Franklin. And I can't type very well, so I wrote this out. I hope I can read it, because I had to do it at the eleventh hour today. Greetings, County Commissioners and fellow citizens of Williamson County. My name is Bruce Bowden. I'm a guitar player, a songwriter, an intellectual property advocate, and a father to two teenage children at Franklin High. I am an eighteen-year resident of Williamson County. Prior to that, I lived in Nashville for fourteen years. I moved to the county knowing that I wanted to raise a family. Besides the beautiful surroundings, the county was known for its good schools. This was important to me because I came from Fairfax County, Virginia, home of one of the best school systems in the United States, and I wanted the best for my children. I'm standing before you tonight because I'm bewildered. Bewildered that one of the wealthiest counties in America feels like it is a burden to fund their school system. Bewildered as to why some are turning this into an anti-tax, anti-government political platform built on the backs of our children. Bewildered as to why a line in the sand is being drawn that will prevent our children from getting the education and the care that they deserve from the wealthiest county in America. One would hope within this elected body that I stand before, that most of you would be standing in the bully pulpit right now explaining to the fortunate citizens of this county why it is of crucial importance to fund our schools. Instead, I'm hearing political soundbites like I hear in talk radio: Tax less, spend less, too much debt. What are we giving our children? Well, my goodness, we have the lowest tax rate in middle Tennessee. Our neighbor Rutherford County pays more sales and property tax than we do in spite of the fact that their per capita income is half of ours. God knows what the per capita income of Murray County is, but they pay more property tax. They pay more sales tax. So does Wilson County. I didn't get the Sumner County info, but I'm sitting there going, my goodness, what is going on here? I mean, they're spending more on their students, and we're sitting here, we're saying we've gotta start cutting things, including the school nurses and everything else. And I watch this whole thing in dismay, because we have an opportunity in this county. I mean, we should be the shining star, but I watch in dismay as the U.S. falls behind the rest of the world in education. We're sitting there about number thirty-seven now, I think, the last thing I saw in education in this country. We're getting our butts kicked by every other country in the industrial world. I mean, and I guess I ask you guys, do we want to be part of that status quo? I mean, we have an opportunity to seize the moment and be part of the solution. We're quick and easy to give tax breaks to Nissan and pet food companies and corporations that want to come to this county. It's not a problem. It passes real clear. But we're sitting here arguing about a school budget that we need. The county is growing. We're investing in our future. Please do the right thing and pass this budget. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. This concludes Citizens Communication. Next item is Communications and Messages. Let's do some paperwork first. We've got four late filed resolutions. First one is Resolution five eleven thirty-six. Under Appropriations, are there any objections to hearing that tonight? It's a resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand and ten eleven Parks and Rec budget by twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars revenues to come from donations. So I see no objections. That'll be the last under Appropriations after Resolution five eleven thirty-four. Then under Other, we've got, we'll have three late filed resolutions. One, Resolution five eleven thirty-five, Resolution to approve the job description of the Emergency Management Agency Director for Williamson County. Any objections to hearing that? I see none. That'll come after Resolution five eleven thirty-one. The next one, late filed Resolution five eleven thirty-seven, Resolution to approve the appointment of the Animal Control Director by the County Mayor. Any objections on that one? I see none. Then the last one, and this one was at your desk tonight, Resolution five eleven thirty-eight, Resolution authorizing the Williamson County Mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corp. for installation of electrical utilities. Any objections to that one? I see none. That'll be the last Resolution under Other, five eleven thirty-eight. And also, I would like to move Resolution five eleven twenty-eight. It's under Other, and move it to under Appropriations right before five eleven twenty-nine. Twenty-eight and twenty-nine complement each other. Are we good there? No objections to that? So we'll move Resolution five eleven twenty-eight under Appropriations right before five eleven twenty-nine. All right, moving on. Next, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Langston and Sheriff Long. They have a recognition they'd like to do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. And first before we do the proclamation, I'd like to tell you a couple of things that are going on in Sheriff's Office, so you'll know about those. I'm very proud to tell you that on April the thirtieth of two thousand and eleven, two Saturdays ago, thirty-six of your deputies volunteered on their own time to go to Decatur County, to Parsons, Tennessee, and go and participate in the search for Holly Bobo. Speaks well for our deputies who, on their own time, volunteered to go down and spend the entire day. I can tell you, it was a tough day. I think they walked probably eight to nine miles is the average of what we saw that they walked in that search, and our prayers certainly were with the Bobo family. I know that family. I'm originally from Parsons, Tennessee. There's a lot of you know, and I know her family. Also, I want you to know that after the May floods of last year, we learned a quick lesson, and we began a Swift Water Rescue Team. And our Swift Water Rescue Team now has been on standby for two weeks to go to West Tennessee. They have been on a thirty-minute notice for some of the time where they were to be packed, ready to be on the road within thirty minutes should the call come. That is less than some, but they are still on call to go to West Tennessee. Also, we have been asked by the Tuscaloosa, Alabama, authorities to have ten deputies on standby should they need those, and we have ten that are packed, ready to go whenever they are asked to deploy to Tuscaloosa to assist our neighbors in Alabama. Now, at this time, I would like to ask Chief Deputy Dusty Rhodes, Captain Roddy Parker, Supervisory Special Agent Randy Beckel with the FBI, and Special Agent Brian Phazenbaker with the FBI to come up and make a presentation to three of, well, really four of our deputies. I'll turn it over to Special Agent, Supervisory Special Agent Beckel.
Good evening. My name is Randy Beckel. I'm a supervisory special agent with the FBI in our Nashville office. With me tonight is Special Agent Brian Phazenbaker. I want to thank the Commissioner for giving us some time this evening to recognize three was Williamson County deputies. But before I get there, I want to thank Sheriff Long and the Williamson County Sheriff's Department for their continued support of the FBI. The FBI could not do our mission without the support of state and local law enforcement, and that's quite a commitment, and it's a partnership we truly honor, and we thank Sheriff Long for his support and the support of law enforcement in Williamson County in particular. Moving forward, we'll go ahead and recognize three deputies this evening. If I could have Deputy Brad Fan, Deputy Kevin Jones, and Deputy Mark Livinggood come forward. We're recognizing them tonight for their support in capturing a bank robber back in November of two thousand and ten. An individual named Stacy Potts robbed the bank in Brentwood. After quite an investigation and support of other law enforcement agencies throughout middle Tennessee, we were able to apprehend Mr. Potts, and it really went back to the support of the local law enforcement, and would like to recognize these three deputies tonight in particular for the arrest of Mr. Potts. So I'm gonna go ahead, and on behalf of our Special Agent in Charge, Amy Hess, in the FBI Memphis Division, I'm gonna present a certificate from the FBI Director, Robert Mueller. I'll go ahead and read, I'll read one, and then we'll recognize the other with the same. This is, "The FBI is proud to recognize Deputy Brad Fan of the Williamson County Sheriff Department for outstanding cooperation, assistance, and connection with an investigation of great importance. The FBI's ability to carry out its investigative responsibility to the American people has been greatly enhanced through your help, and you can be very proud of your valuable contributions to the success achieved. Signed, Robert S. Mueller, the Third Director." Deputy Fan. And next, we'd like to recognize Deputy Kevin Jones. Next, Deputy Mark Livinggood. Again, thank you for your time, and I appreciate the support of Williamson County Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Long.
As you can hear, Cash wants to be recognized also. So I will rec. I will briefly recognize Cash to let you know that Cash qualified as number five recently in the national qualifications by the United States Police Canine Association. He was rated as number five in the nation.
As Chair of the Law Enforcement Committee, I'd like to thank Sheriff Long and these deputies for the work that they do, and I want to get back up to my seat because that dog was looking at me.
Thank you, Sheriff Long, and I know it's an honor to have such great people and volunteers in Williamson County. Thank you. Moving on to reports of county offices. County Mayor Anderson is in Brentwood administering the oath of office to some new elected officials up there, so he will be here as soon as he can, but I'd like to recognize David Coleman for a financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll go through the reports that we normally bring to you each month and take a quick look at those. We have the budget report for the month of August, which gives us a nine-month, three-quarters of the year look, and everything appears to be in order there. If you'll notice, several of our funds have exceeded the revenue projections, and everything looks to be in good shape there at that point in the year. The April report is not available yet due to the early timing of this meeting. We do have two of the privileged tax reports for the month of March and April, and then if you'll look at the graph report we've been giving you of the privileged tax, we're happy to report that the last three months of this year have all exceeded the last three years, not by much, not as much as oh six, oh seven, but at least we're headed in the right direction, and that's the kind of trend we were hoping to start seeing, and hopefully that will be consistent through the summer and into the fall, so we're glad to report that. Mr. Chairman, we do not have the report yet from the Cool Springs Marriott Conference Center for this month, so if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take those.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any questions for Mr. Coleman? I see none, thank you. Next, we have Dr. Mike Looney, Director of Schools.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good to see you tonight. I would also state that this is a very special week for nurses. It's National Nurse Appreciation Week, so if you see a nurse, hug him or her and thank them for what they do. There are a lot of things happening in the district. Obviously, we are on the wind-down phase of the school year. We'll begin giving end-of-course exams here in the next couple of days. You may be interested in how we're doing on construction. Construction is on track at Summit High School and at Clovercroft Elementary School. Just as a side note, we continue to monitor enrollment projections, and our enrollment projections at Summit High School currently are eighty-three students above our projection, so it looks like perhaps there's a little spur in growth down in Spring Station, Spring Hill area. And then finally, we do have a number of resolutions for your consideration tonight. Be glad to answer any questions at the appropriate time. Do certainly encourage and hope that you see fit to approve those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. Any other report from any county offices or committees? Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the...
The Steering Committee met April the fourth this year to come up with-
Committee for the redistricting. And we met and came up with a committee recommendation that was approved unanimously. Unfortunately, it did not make these minutes for our vote. And I think we need to get this committee rolling, because it's a critical feature we have to do and be done by year-end. And the committee nominees were Jack Walton, Bob Barnwell, Brian Betherd, Arlene Cook, John Hancock, and Cheryl Wilson. And that motion passed unanimously, six-zero. And I'd like to put that on the floor as a, that we vote on this this evening, so we can get this committee rolling. We also will have representatives from Am Beard, representatives from County IT, and legal counsel that would help this committee go through their process as they come up with redistricting. And we understand that this will be a committee that will have a lot of active participation. But it's good to have a small core to go forward and get, go through the process. And I don't know if I need to make that nomination recommendation, or...
Yeah.
So moved.
Proper motion. Do I have a second? Was that Commissioner Little? All right. Any discussion, Commissioner Smith?
Could we get those names again?
Yeah, it's Jack Walton, Bob Barnwell, Ryan Betherd, Arlene Cook, John Hancock, and Cheryl Wilson. It was felt it was a very diverse countywide group of people with a lot of different types of experience that had gone through a redistricting before. Would be beneficial for them.
Commissioner Smith, basically, that's the Steering Committee-
Right.
Plus a few extra members from different departments. Any other questions? See none? Can we just do this voice vote? Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we move to elections and appointments. Hospital Board of Trustees, three-year terms expiring five-two thousand fourteen. The first member we have, at-large member, Districts nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, term expiring Russell Little. Nomination, Russell Little. Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Brockman the Second. Districts three and four, term expiring Commissioner Cheryl Wilson. Nomination, Commissioner Cheryl Wilson. Mr. Brockman, Second. Commissioner Shalafant. And Districts seven and eight, Bert Shalafant, term expiring. Nomination, Bert Shalafant. Commissioner Hester the Second. Are there any other nominations from the floor? I see none. Is this, this not on the board? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. One abstention. Next, appointment in election, Equalization Board, filling an unexpired term expiring five-two thousand twelve. Harold F. Jeffrey deceased. Nomination, Stan Tyson. Commissioner Brockman, the motion. Commissioner Davis the Second. Any other nominations? I see none. All in favor, Commissioner Tyson? Opposed? Commissioner Tyson passes unanimously. Next item is a consent agenda. We have the notaries, and that's in your packet. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Langston. Commissioner Little the Second. It's on the machine. All in favor? Push the yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson. Okay, thank you. Moving on to appropriations. No new business. Resolution five-eleven-four, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven juvenile court clerk's budget by one thousand forty-five dollars for the purchase of computer software. Revenues to come from reserve account. Entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Commissioner Langston? And you've got a second? Commissioner Jones, Second. Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
This is a subscription that comes to you every year, and it's, money is taken from reserve funds, from filing fees and depositions, and I would ask approval.
Discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of five-eleven-four, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution five-eleven-five, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven Veteran Services Budget by sixteen hundred dollars. Revenues to come from memorial brick paver sales. Commissioner Hayes? Who's that? Commissioner Barnwell? Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, these are pavers that are sold about, memory of people down at Five Points at the bicentennial area down there. They've collected sixteen hundred dollars, and we're trying to move this money from the general fund into the supplies, so they can go ahead and purchase those bricks, memorial bricks, pavers.
Any discussion? The, I just want to add, they're having a Memorial Day service at Five Points at the park on, I believe it's May thirtieth, which is Memorial Day. At ten o'clock, you get there about nine-thirty, bring a chair. It's a, lasts about an hour, and it's a terrific event. And encourage you to attend. So, ready to vote? All in favor of five-eleven-five, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-six, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven Chancery Court Clerk and Masters Budget by five thousand dollars for additional postage. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds.
Move for approval.
Mr. Green? Commissioner Hayes, Second. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, there's a, there's a push going on right now to collect the past due business privileged taxes, and we're trying to get that taken care of before we, there's a deadline coming up. And in effort to do that, we've had to mail out a lot more notices to the folks that are deficient in paying their privileged tax. So this is money to cover the cost.
Budget Committee report?
Four-zero.
Four-zero. Any questions? I see none. All in favor of five-eleven-six, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-seven, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven Health Department Budget by sixteen hundred dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Mr. Wilson? Commissioner Green the Second. Budget report?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Did this go to Public Health?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, okay. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, the Williamson County Health Department sponsored a walk across to Williamson County, a community walking program. And various companies have made donations to cover those expenses. And this is a transfer of those monies to offset those costs.
Any discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor? Five-eleven-seven, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-nine, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven Election Commission Budget by nineteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Revenues to come from other local revenues.
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Green, the motion. Commissioner Little the Second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, these, and the local elections which we had in Fairview, Knowlesville, Thompson Station, these are monies that they had to spend to hold those elections, and this is the money from the various communities to offset those costs back to the Election Commission.
Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of five-eleven-nine, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-eleven, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven Public Transportation Budget by ninety-eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. Revenues to come from reserve accounts.
Move for approval.
Commissioner Langston the Second. Bud, Property Committee report? Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, this is the Vanpool Rag Share Program administered by the TMA. And they're in the process of purchasing a one-fifteen-passenger van and three-twelve-passenger vans. This has been very successful in the county. I'm trying to remember how many vans we have on the road? Eighty. There's eighty vans on the road carrying people to and from work and to appointments and what have you. So it's a very successful program. But the monies come, the money comes from the fees we charge the riders that participate in that Vanpool project.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? Five-eleven-eleven, if you're in favor, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-thirteen, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten-eleven Capital Project Budget by four hundred thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated solid waste sanitation fund balance.
Move approval.
Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Hester the Second. Committee reports, Municipal Solid Waste Board?
Three-four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, when we get through with our equipment at the landfill, it's really finished. And we have a great need for this track-type tractor, and we need to have it now. So there is money in the reserve to purchase it, and we need to go ahead and do it and try to get some of these benefits out of maybe the surplus of an old for parts, or perhaps even a better deal than if we wait.
Any questions? I see none. All in favor of five-eleven-thirteen, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone like to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-fourteen, resolution amending the two thousand ten-eleven General Purpose School Budget ninety-six thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighteen cents for certain expenses from additional state revenue.
Move for approval.
Was that Commissioner Hayes? Come on, Commissioner Brockman, I'm sorry. Committee report? School Board, twelve-four, zero against. Education Committee?
Education, seven yes, zero no.
Budget?
Budget Committee was four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, there's a need to increase our contracted services, the legal services for special education students, as well as equipment for these students. And I ask that you support this.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor of five-eleven-fourteen, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do it at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five-eleven-fifteen, resolution appropriating in the General Purpose School two thousand ten-eleven Budget, fifteen thousand one hundred additional federal funds for non-personnel expenditures for the Board's Adult Education Program.
Move approval.
Commissioner Smith the Second. Commissioner Brockman, the motion. School Board, twelve-four, zero against. Education Committee?
Seven yes, zero no.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, these are additional federal funds to cover the Adult Education Program for materials and supplies.
Any questions? I see none. If you're in favor of five-eleven-fifteen, push your yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number five-eleven-sixteen, resolution appropriating in the General Purpose School two thousand ten-eleven Budget, twenty thousand dollars additional federal funds for personnel and non-personnel expenditures for the Board's Adult Education Program.
Move approval.
Proper motion? Commissioner Smith the Second. School Board, twelve yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Education, seven yes, zero no.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
This is a transition grant for the Adult Education Program. These funds will be used for personnel and to purchase materials and supplies.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? Five-eleven-sixteen, if you're in favor, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution five-eleven-seventeen, resolution appropriating thirty-four thousand three hundred additional state funds for the Safe Schools Resource Officer Program.
Move for approval.
Brockman, the motion. Commissioner Hester the Second. School Board, twelve-four, zero against. Education Committee?
Seven-four, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, four-four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
These are funds for the Safe Schools Program, and additional school resource officers are needed.
Any discussion? See none. You ready to vote? All in favor of five-eleven-seventeen, push yes button. Opposed? Your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution appropriating two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the two thousand ten-eleven General Purpose School Fund from unappropriated fund balance for student assessment.
Move for approval.
Proper motion? Mr. Hester the Second. School Board, twelve-four, zero against. Education?
Six yes, one no.
Budget?
Three yes, one no.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are, due to the new testing standards, it was determined from the School Board and the staff that an assessment process was vital for our students. And in order to make that value-added improvement to the scores, this needs to be put in place now.
Any discussion? Commissioner Danner?
I'd like to ask Dr. Looney something about this. If I could. I voted no, because for me, there were just too many unknowns at this point. I appreciate that it's an unfunded mandate by the state. I'm sort of, I'm of the thinking, if the state wants it, then by golly, they should pay for it, and we shouldn't. Especially because I feel it's very experimental. We've chosen a different path than FSSD. And it does bother me a great deal that at one point you said you would, you want this so badly, you'd rather cut nurses than cut this program. I read that FSSD, if they, their TCAP scores are not improved in one year, that they will drop this for next year, because this is a quarter of a million dollars every year, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Will you do the same? If it doesn't improve the TCAP scores in one year, are you gonna, are you gonna come to us and ask for it again?
Well, I would have to speak to my employer. That's the School Board, so I don't want to speak on their behalf. I would say that Williamson County Schools is a little bit behind some of the other districts that have been able to use their ORF funds for this kind of project. Because we didn't receive many ORF funds, we were not in a position to do- funds for this kind of project. Because we didn't receive many ARA funds, we were not in a position to do what many other school districts in the state have done. It is a true statement that FSSD chose a different vendor than we did. As a sidebar, it's an interesting development and that is the program that the state had originally said they were going to use with a product called Limelight by Pearson. And Pearson has now bought out SchoolNet, which is the product that the school district, this school district has chosen. And as I said in a couple of other previous meetings, we have some other school systems that are currently making a decision whether or not they want to partner with us in a collaborative or cooperative arrangement. And I believe that that will come to light in the very near future. Having said that, I'll make two other comments. The comment about the nurse, you did ask that question, but I, in fairness to the School Board, I want to put it in context. It's really a matter of cutting off your left arm or your right arm. Which one do you want to do? The fact is that we need both, school nurses and formative assessment. The context of that comment or that response was the school district has for the last six or seven years tried to move into a direction of having a formative assessment. When I first joined the school district, the single most important thing that the staff, principals, and teachers told me they needed to be successful moving forward was to have a formative assessment such as we do now or proposing. And so that's the reason for that response. And the best description I can provide this County Commission, imagine that you are given directions to go from here to Nashville and it's nighttime and you don't have any headlights on your car. And this formative assessment works in such a way. It gives us a path, a clear path, to get from point A to point B. And this is particularly important because moving forward, the boys and girls of Williamson County, in fact, the boys and girls across the state, their grades at the end of the year are going to be impacted how well they do on the TVAS assessment. So we're not in a position, in my opinion, to wait till the end of the year and do an autopsy to see if the kids made it. We need to have assessments along the way. The same is true for our educators. Educators' performance evaluations and further employment is contingent upon their ability to grow their TVAS scores. And frankly, we do not have an assessment piece in place to help ensure that those boys and girls and our teachers are going to get there. And so that's why I think it is imperative, Mrs. Danner, to be succinct. The answer to your question, the best I can, I would certainly say that if the data tells us that this tool ends up not being useful, which I don't believe it would, but it could, anything's possible, then certainly I would be making a recommendation to the School Board to eliminate the use of the product. One other stipulation I'd like to make, and that is, it could be that at some point in time, the state goes, takes their lack of commitment away and funds up products such as this as they said they were going to do nearly a year ago.
Yeah, follow up. Just, so do we know then, the product that you've chosen or recommending, the state is going to, that's on their list of what, do we know what the state will fund? Or is the product you've chosen the one that the state will definitely?
It's the same company. It's a different product. They're merging the product that we chose and the product that the state was going to choose. My understanding is that, I don't want to speak for the state, is that they are currently tied down in litigation as relates to that product and it has something to do with how they did or did not bid it out. Independent of that, we've been examining a formative assessment tool for the last five or six years. And this is the tool that, independent of this money, that our principals chose. It just has taken this long to come to fruition. We would have not come forward and asked you for the money if the state had kept their promise. They haven't. Our teachers need this tool to guarantee our students' success.
And thirty-five percent of the teachers' evaluation is now tied to the growth. This tool will help them?
Well, yes, ma'am. Actually, it's fifty, but thirty-five percent is strictly TVAS or end of course exam. There's another fifteen percent that is tied to local standards. And we haven't received a definition from the state as to what those local standards are yet.
And you don't think this tool will create a greater temptation for grade inflation halfway through when they get their assessment?
I actually think it will do the exact opposite. I think it will give us truth in reporting. Because as we move along in the formative assessment process, at the end of the nine weeks, if a fourth grade student has an A in math but is not showing grade level performance on this formative assessment, then as they say, we have a problem in youth and we can intercede.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, two points. Number one, I'm not, on this resolution, I'm not a fan of unfunded mandates by the state or the federal government as far as that goes. And I'd like to back up to the resolution if, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me, just to ask one question. This is five, eleven, sixteen, which had to do with the transition grants for the adult education?
Yes, sir.
That's hiring a new teacher, I understand?
The answer is for the adult education program? Actually, it's not for hiring a new teacher. Last year, as part of a reduction, budget reduction process, we actually eliminated our full-time teachers there and only went to part-time hourly employees. So this is going to provide us additional hours for those employees to work.
It's going to be a transitional grant?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And when this person goes in under a grant, will they be signing that document that they realize that they're being hired under a grant?
Yes, sir. This is one-time grant money.
And that they realize that the job could go away?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
This is in preparation of leading up to the TCAP scores or tests, right? I mean, it's the indication of where we stand as we move towards the final exams.
Yes, sir. This provides our teachers and students an individual roadmap where they are in relationship to the end of the year exam. So we know what paths, what learning paths to take for individual students and groups of students in our schools.
And the fact that the results of this test next year will be reflected in the students' grades for that year, fifteen percent. And as I understand, each year thereafter, it increases in percentage as to what their final score will be.
Well, that's actually not a true statement. The Board of Education is considering, and they haven't met yet, but the recommendation from my office is to weight the TVAS score as fifteen percent of a student's grade, grades three through eight. And we do not anticipate that weighting to increase over time.
At the present time, the TCAP scores that we've gotten now, the students took these tests, had no repercussions from how well they did or how bad they did as far as their final grade goes.
Yes, sir. That's correct. The media held the school system accountable, but there was no accountability at the student level or frankly, at the teacher level as it relates to, did your children grow, did your students grow one full academic year?
When I, we had this, we heard this at the budget meeting and since then, I look, ACT, I can get a program at the bookstore for ACT. You take the test three times, comes back, tells me what I need to reinforce my math or what have you. I got on the TCAP website and there's a sample test out there you can take under the TCAP website. And I didn't want to take it because I find that I'm not smarter than a fifth grader. But I thought it was interesting that there's a sample test out there now on the internet. And I don't know this, what this program that you have here, is probably a bare minimum test as an example is what is going to be on a TCAP.
Yes, sir. The exam that the state provides is really a formatting preparation. And since you brought the ACT book up, I'll give you a really good comparison. I don't know what bookstore you went to, but generally, those books run between twenty-five and fifty bucks. This is a ten, less than a ten-dollar product per child in Williamson County.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Looney, thank you for being here this evening and, you know, allow me to say for the record that I do think this is a good program if we have the money. As Commissioner Williams mentioned beforehand, I have a concern with this being an unfunded state mandate. And considering that we're facing a seven-point-something-million-dollar shortfall right now, moving into 2011, 2012, not counting the capital requests, my concern is at some point, this Board's going to have to respectfully say no to certain requests. And this appears to be one of those times. I would also argue, as you mentioned beforehand, and I liked your analogy as far as we need headlights to get between Franklin and Nashville, and I would certainly agree with you in that regard. But I've also, during my time, worked with some teachers and I would suggest that those are our headlights right now. That they do a very good job and this would be a value-added tool for them, but at this time, considering that we don't have the money, I'm going to respectfully have to vote no against this.
Yes, sir. And I'll simply reply, and I mean this with no disrespect equally. There is a lot at stake for us all in this community as it relates to public schools. And Commissioner Ryan, you just saw fit to vote in favor of a four-hundred-thousand-dollar expenditure for the landfill. And I would proffer that the students of Williamson County are just as important as moving trash from one place to another.
Commissioner Ford?
Two quick questions. Dr. Looney, thank you for being here. First of all, can you, you mentioned that there were a couple of different products that were out there that would provide this service. Can you tell me a little bit about your evaluation process?
Yes, sir. First of all, we did an RFP. And so we selected the top three choices for the school district. And then we entered into negotiations with the remaining three. It just so happens that some of the remaining three didn't respond to the negotiation process. So they weeded themselves out. More importantly, before we even got to the RFP process, our principals collectively, for the last several years, in fact, have been trying to vet products to determine what the best one would be. And this happens to be that one that they chose as well. So I feel very comfortable that the school district's done an analysis. You know, it's a matter of, are you choosing a Ford or a Chevy? In this case, is the best example I can give you. One of the side benefits of us choosing this product is it also aligns to the grade book that we use in the school district. So therefore, when the teachers administer this assessment, the grades will automatically deploy into the grade book, saving time and energy and effort and potential for miscalculations and that sort of thing. So we feel like we've vetted the product extremely well. We feel very comfortable in the selection. And we did use an RFP process to get to this.
Okay. You answered a couple of my questions. Inside that, first of all, who was on the group who set the criteria? Because that's important to me, that the teachers and educators are very involved in the process of setting the criteria for the selection process. Because I want to make sure it's something that they are able to and will use. Second piece is, wanted to make sure that we are buying a Ford and a Chevy and not buying a Maserati.
We are certainly not buying a Maserati. I would classify it as Chevrolet.
Okay, thank you. My next question, my last question is, we're going to identify these students who need some reteaching or need some help. How will those interventions be handled considering that, from what I understand, the school system is staffed appropriately at best? And that these interventions, I assume, will take classroom time and someone will have to actually be doing these interventions with these students to help them along the path. Can you give me a sense of how that'll work?
Yes, sir. Actually, this is going to help because previously, the teachers had to administer those intervention assessments one-on-one. And now they will be able to administer them, score them, and it will provide a report to the teacher. These are the kinds of things that this specific child needs remediation and intervention on. And therefore, it will make the teachers' time, it will make the teachers be able to use their time in a more efficient way. As it relates to the staffing numbers go, honestly, you know, I've articulated where we are staffing-wise. Our hope is that in another conversation, we can talk about redeploying some of the teacher assistance that we had to let go last year. And that's a conversation I look forward to having with the Commission.
So are you saying that to properly administer the reteaching and interventions that are needed, that are determined from this assessment process, will need extra personnel?
No, sir. I'm not saying that.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand you on that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak that hasn't spoken to it? All right. Commissioner Ryan?
Did want to follow up on the conversation that you and I were having, Dr. Looney. One of the things that I would like to clarify on this regarding moving trash for four-hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Mayor, isn't that coming from the solid waste sanitation funds as far as, it's a separate account? That's not coming out of our unappropriated general funds? Is that correct? Okay. So, Dr. Looney, I want to make sure that there's no confusion here, that we were just simply agreeing to allow the solid waste department to use the money that they already had.
Well, that's true of the Williamson County Board of Education as well, sir.
I understand that, but we're also not facing a fifteen-million-dollar shortfall with the solid waste sanitation. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor of five, eleven, eighteen, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Nineteen, yes. Three, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five, eleven, nineteen. Resolution appropriating twenty thousand dollars for fingerprints slash background checks, revenue to come from fees. Commissioner Brockman, the motion. Commissioner Salafont, the second. School Board voted eleven to zero.
Education, six, yes. Zero, no.
Budget? Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Apparently, we're required to run background checks on all our employees and volunteers of the district. And we're needing additional funds to this line item for the remainder of the year.
Any discussion? I see none. You're ready to vote? All in favor of five, eleven, nineteen, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Resolution passes. Resolution five, eleven, twenty. Resolution appropriating twenty thousand dollar state funds for coordinated school health program.
Move for approval?
Second.
Proper motion?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wilson. School Board, eleven, four, zero against. Education?
Six, yes. Zero, no.
Budget, Commissioner Green? Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes. Williamson County Board of Education applied for and received this twenty thousand dollar competitive grant and the proceeds will be used to purchase a web-based version of software program for PE classes K through twelve.
Any discussion? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor of five, eleven, twenty, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes. Zero, no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five, eleven, twenty-one. Resolution appropriating two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars in the two thousand ten-eleven Extended School Program Fund for additional expenses through the end of the year.
Move for approval?
Proper motion? Mr. Hester, the second. School Board voted eleven, yes. Zero, no. Education Committee?
Education, six, yes. Zero, no.
Budget Committee? Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We added Westwood Elementary School to this extended school program and it is a self-sufficient, so the increase can be used for this extended program through the rest of the year.
Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A quick question. If this program is self-sufficient, why do we have to fund this increase out of fund balance? Why is there not additional revenues that are in the budget to cover this?
Dr. Looney?
Yes, sir. They were, we knew about the revenue already. We just didn't know about the expenditures because it's changing from the system-provided Extended School Program from fund company. So the revenue was already coming in. We just didn't know it was going to be an expenditure on the Board's side.
So you had budgeted the money to be paid out to fund company?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Is that correct? I might need her. Come on up here. She's the accountant.
I thought you were going to have to bring her up. I was wondering how long you were going to go.
Last year, we knew the revenue was coming in because we about in May found out that Westwood wanted to change over. So we went ahead and put the revenue in there, but they didn't.
Speaking to Mike, please.
Do what?
Speaking to the mic.
Okay. We did, at that time, we went ahead and put the revenue in, but we didn't know what the expenditures were. And so we thought we'd wait till late in the year to see what they are looking like to be and that's what the expenditures is. The revenue's already in fund balance.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Follow-up, Mr. Ford? Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of five, eleven, twenty-one, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 511-22, resolution amending the 2010-2011 General Purpose School Fund operating budget, $150,000 for gasoline.
Move for approval?
Second.
Proper motion, Commissioner Brockman, second. Commissioner Williams. School board, 11 yes, zero no. Education?
Education, six yes, zero no.
Budget?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Gas has gone up.
Yes.
Well said.
Well said.
Ready to vote? If you favor Resolution 511-22, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anybody wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 511-23. Resolution appropriating $200,000 in the General Purpose School Fund budget from current revenues for related trustee commission.
Move for approval?
Proper motion?
Second.
Commissioner Hester the second. School board, 11 yes, zero no. Education?
Education, six yes, zero no.
Budget?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Brockman?
Well, this is sort of like moving 200,000 around in a line item. That's the way it was explained to me. So this is taking it from the property tax collections to the trustee commission.
Any questions?
You may have to get Leslie up here if you want to get technical.
You did good. Ready to vote? All in favor of 511-23, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, please do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 511-24, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-11 Parks and Recreation Budget by $2,250. Revenue, revenues to come from donations. Move for approval? Proper motion? Mr. Jones the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
I believe it was five in favor, zero against.
Okay.
Five of us there.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is donations that they do every year for the annual Easter egg hunt, and it's putting them into the budget.
Very good. Any questions? You ready to vote? 511-24, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution 511-25, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-11 Parks and Recreation Budget by $8,527. Revenues to come from donations. Mr. Jones? Mr. Hayes the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Parks and Rec, five in favor, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is donations from the community associations for referees and officials, putting them into the budget.
Any discussion? If you're in favor of 511-25, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution 511-26, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-11 Parks and Rec Budget by $2,070. Reven, revenues to come from donations.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Wilson the second. Parks and Rec Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Again, this is taking donations that they have collected for special events and putting them into the budget.
Any questions? Ready to vote on 511-26? Push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 511-28, a resolution to repeal previously adopted self-imposed restrictions on the expenditure of funds received by Williamson County from the Williamson County Adequate School Facilities Tax. Private Act, Chapter 113 of 1987 is amended. Commissioner Little? Commissioner Wilson, second. Tax Study Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Commissioner Little, are you going to address this?
Yes, when, four years ago, when we implemented the educational impact fee, as we call it, it was in there that we would use it for construction and paying, but not for the interest. And so this is changing that authorization to where we can use it to pay the bonds and the interest and not just principal. Any other questions, I defer to Mr. Coleman.
Commissioner Brockman?
What caused this, this to be a problem in terms of the way we, we set it up? Because we obviously set it up in order to have an adequate school facilities tax that would go toward constructing new schools, given the fact that new people and new houses brought more students.
Mr. Brockman, that's correct, and that's why we're asking for this kind of a redesignation of these funds. And back in 2007, when this was done, we were kind of at the peak of our building in the county. It was a very good idea to hold those funds and use them for new construction. But the change in the economic climate since 2007, we have built several new schools. We borrowed the money to build those schools. And right now, especially in the Rural Debt Service Fund, we have a great need for these funds to go in there to pay the debt on the schools that we've built. And so that's why we're asking for the redesignation, and then you'll actually see an appropriation in the next resolution.
And so it gives us the flexibility to do that, and it takes out this restriction that we self-imposed. But it doesn't necessarily mean that we couldn't use the funds for, for new construction, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that, you could go back to, even though that's not stipulated, you could certainly vote to do that.
Follow-up, Commissioner Brockman?
I think I got it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I see none. You ready to vote? 511-28, if you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution number 511-29, resolution appropriating $7 million adequate school facilities tax funds in appropriating the related operating transfers for 2010-11 Rural Debt Service expenditures.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Little? Commissioner Ryan the second. Tax Study Committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is a companion to the resolution we just passed. This is taking the $7 million that we have collected and putting it into the adequate, to the fund balance for Rural Debt Service. This Rural Debt Service is all schools in those bond issues. And this is where we have the most need. And this $7 million, it has already been split with the Franklin Special School District. And so I'd like to recommend that we transfer this money to shore up that fund.
Any questions? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor of 511-29, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one yes, one no.
Resolution passes. Resolution 511-30, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-11 Library Budget by $9,000 for the purchase of data processing equipment, revenues to come from state grant funds. Proper motion, second. Commissioner Langston the second. Budget committee?
4, 4, 0 against.
Library Board of Directors?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a Tennessee State Library and Archives gives us grants to public libraries, purchase data processing equipment. We've received this grant, and it's just allowed us now to go and purchase the equipment.
Any questions? I see none. You ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Mr.? Oh, he's out, excuse me. Twenty-one yes.
Passes unanimously. Twenty-one yes, and Commissioner Bather did step out of the room. So, Resolution 511-32, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-11 County General and Capital Projects Budget by $55,000, revenues to come from county general fund balance.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Green, the motion. Commissioner Little the second. Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Did this go in front of law enforcement? Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what the, what we're trying to do is, between the Williamson County Government and the Williamson Medical Center is partnering to back up each one's data. And not only the data, we'll also have the equipment on that site at Williamson Medical to back up this facility. And Williamson Medical will have a site here with the equipment to back up their data. Considering what's happening just south of us and what's happened over in the High River right now, this is, this is a thing we need to do, is to have that backup capability between the two. And it's not just a backup data, it's, it's actually having the equipment to utilize it. So there will be mirror image of Medical, Williamson Medical here, and a mirror image of our, at Williamson Medical continually updated.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Brockman?
So we're going to have all our records on a separate computer over there?
Yes.
Is that the general idea, backup computer?
And also have the equipment there, because we could always go to these offices that save you data for you. But if you lose the equipment, we're out of luck also.
So an example would be, we have a catastrophe and it affects one building, not the other? Is that the thinking?
Right, right. Hopefully, it's not both.
Okay.
But that's the, that's what we want to do, and considering what's happened in Tuscaloosa and
Right.
Southern Tennessee.
And then in looking at the office site storage that, you know, private companies offer, that's just not...
Well, they would only back up the data, but if we lose the equipment. They've got the data, but we don't have the equipment to download it into. So this is the backup, also the hardware and the software.
Thank you.
Commissioner Danner?
We already have the data backed up by a third-party company, correct? Is that mayor? We just need the space and the hardware. We've already got all our data backed up, correct?
Our data, what we're actually doing here is a mirror, the IT boys call it a mirror. Everything that happens on a daily basis will show up on the mainframe over at the hospital. To answer your question a little bit more, Ms. Brockman, is why we didn't go offsite is because of cost. $55,000 is, is our cost. The hospital will bring their data over here as a backup. Hope that answers your question. We can do it now, it just takes us weeks to do it.
It doesn't answer my question. So we're not using a third-party company to back up our data now?
We back up our own data.
It's all in-house?
It's all offsite.
Stored offsite. Okay, because that answers, because I was going to say, if that third, why doesn't that third-party company offer the, the space? But there is no third, we're not outsourcing that at all, it's all in-house. And we don't, so, oh, wow, okay. Wow.
Ready to vote? If you're in favor, 511-32, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, twenty-two yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution 511-33, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-11 County General and Capital Projects Budget by $735,720 for the purchase of new sheriff's department vehicles and facility maintenance at the Criminal Justice Center. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds.
Move for approval?
Proper motion? Commissioner Green, Commissioner Chalafontas II. Law enforcement committee? Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is to purchase additional sheriff's deputy cars and also take care of some maintenance at the Criminal Justice Center as far as roof repair, parking lot repair, and exterior, exterior building painting. And what we've done is, we wanted to put this in here to purchase the cars within this budget year so we can get it at a lower cost than what it might cost us in the next. Actually, it's the next budget, year's budget where we're going to purchase them now to get the, take advantage of the lower price on the cars and accessories. And also on the maintenance part of it, looking at that, the roof repair, parking lot repair, that's repaving the parking lot, which we're, what we're paying for is the blacktop. And as far as the painting, next to the, exterior of the building, there's, we're just paying for the paint. There's some labor over there we can use. Yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Ford?
Mr. Chairman, I understand why we would want to go ahead and get the, the vehicles now, that makes sense to me. Why would the other capital projects, why would we not consider them through our normal capital improvement pro, approval process that we do in our July budget? Is there a need to rush the, these other items at this point?
Mr. Coleman, you answer that?
Mr. Chairman, this is one that we would normally take up at the July meeting. And being as we were moving the vehicles up, it's coming out of our fund balances, we didn't see a reason not to go ahead and do that also. It's, if we wait till July, it's the same money, we're not gaining or losing anything.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the, the difference for me is, it gives me a view of the full capital needs of the entire county rather than looking at each department on a, on a piecemeal basis.
I might just comment, Mr. Chairman, and then Commissioner Ford, that one of our guidelines this year on the county general side was no capital. So I don't think you're going to see any more on our side, the schools haven't been dealt with yet. But between this one and what we did on the, on the IT department, $55,000, I think it's pretty well going to take care of us.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any further questions? I see none. Ready to vote? All in favor, 511-33, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time. Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes, zero no.
Resolution 511-34, resolution appropriating and amending the 2010-2011 Sheriff's Office Budget by $15,200. Revenues to come from reserve fund.
Move for approval?
Back to proper motion, Commissioner Jones the second. Law enforcement committee?
Seven, four, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, 4, 0, as amended, and I'd like to offer an amendment.
All right.
Amendment to amend the total resolution cost to $16,100 to be appropriated into the tactical equipment with the additional $900 to come from reserve fund. That's the motion.
That's proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Langston?
It was also approved by the law enforcement committee.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion on the amendment? I see none. You've got that loaded, Lynn? We'll vote on the amendment only. So we're, we're amending Resolution 511-34. If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two yes.
All right. The amendment passes. Now we're back to the main resolution, 511-34 is amended. Any discussion? I see none. You ready to vote? If you're in favor, push the yes button. Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-two, yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven thirty-six, resolution appropriating and amending the two thousand ten, eleven Parks and Recreation budget by twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, revenues to come from donations.
Move for approval?
Second.
Proper motion, Commissioner Little, second, Commissioner Green. Parks and Rec committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Little?
Yes, this is like earlier, it's taking money that they've collected for fees and softball and entering into the budget.
Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? Five eleven thirty-six. If you're in favor, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven two, a resolution setting the Williamson County hotel motel tax rate for the fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Commissioner Hayes?
Mr. President?
Second.
Commissioner Wilson the second. Tax study committee? Comis-
Oh, I'm sorry, five in favor, zero against.
Okay. Budget committee?
The budget committee, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
This hotel motel tax has to be set each year. If we don't, it sunshines out, and we are not able then to legally collect money at the, a lot, for the lodging visitors. And keeping in mind what we heard earlier from Mark Shore, we know what an advantage it is, and we know that it does save each household in Williamson County through approximately three hundred and forty-six dollars in, in, uh, tax. So, I hope you will, um, support this.
And this is no increase?
That's right, it's the same as it's been.
Uh, any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of five eleven two, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven three, resolution declaring certain property and equipment surplus, property and authorizing the sale of property by sealed bid.
Move for approval.
Proper motion, Commissioner Wilson the second. Uh, property committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
From time to time, I know you're used to seeing the surplus material listed, this is a little different listing, but it is just declaring it surplus, so it can be sold.
Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of five eleven three, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven eight, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to execute a grant agreement with the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation.
Move for approval.
Proper motion, Commissioner Little the second. Budget committee report?
Budget committee, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation has, uh, received some four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and there's a pass-through grant for Williamson County ride share and the, uh, program, and distributed in equal amounts of one hundred and fifty thousand for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, and two thousand fourteen. No matching grant funds needed.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Any questions? Ready to vote? All in favor, push the yes button on five eleven eight? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven ten, resolution ratifying continued membership in the Regional Transportation Authority of Middle Tennessee.
Move for approval.
Proper motion? Commissioner Little the second. Budget committee report?
Four, 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 zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Yeah, probably, like, this has to do with the public transportation provided by these life essential goods and services for citizens across Middle Tennessee, and this is to, uh, continue the, a membership in that organization, and, um, it provides transportation to and from work, access to businesses, and spurs economic development in the area.
Right, very good. Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of resolution five eleven ten, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, twenty-two, yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven twelve, resolution directing revenue designated for road purposes that is collected from the Williamson County business tax that exceeded three million, four hundred thousand, and funds collected from the Williamson County wheel tax that exceed three million, five hundred thousand for the fiscal year two thousand ten, eleven, be redesignated to the general fund. Commissioner Green?
Uh, move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson the second. Highway commission? Five, four, zero against. Tax study?
Five, four, zero against.
Budget committee?
Uh, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Green?
I'm gonna get David to help me out on this one.
Mr. Chairman, this, this one is a little tricky. You've heard in discussions with the school board about maintenance of effort, uh, we have a similar thing that takes place in the highway department, we receive state funds, state gasoline tax, and one thing we have to do in our revenue in the highway fund is to maintain a five-year average of our revenue going into that fund that are local dollars. And if we fall below that five-year average, they take away one dollar of state gasoline tax for every dollar we fall below. In those years that we were growing, we had no problem getting above the five-year average, but we were growing so fast that the average kept climbing. And then when the economy kinda leveled off, we still had this five-year average that had grown, but the economy kept dropping off. So, in order to kinda hold the average down, we have set a cap on these two revenue items that go in the highway fund. And should they reach this cap, which would still allow them to maintain the five-year average, any excess will go back to the county general fund. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, there hasn't been a whole lot of excess, but it does help us to maintain that five-year average.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Any questions for Mr. Coleman? I see none, ready to vote? All in favor of five eleven twelve, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution five eleven twenty-seven, a resolution appropriating the plan for reappraisal in Williamson County as submitted by the assessor of property for Williamson County.
Move for approval.
Proper motion?
Second.
Commissioner Hester the second. Uh, tax study committee?
Five in favor, zero against.
Budget committee?
Budget committee, four, four, zero against.
I'd also like to take this time to recognize Dennis Anglin, the property assessor's here, welcome Dennis. Sorry you're at the end of the agenda. You gonna speak to the-
I, I'll start it.
Okay.
Uh, we are just completing our five, uh, our annual, I guess it's a five-year reappraisal, and the state law requires that we submit a plan for the next five-year reappraisal, and that is what this is. This is the plan for the next appraisal.
Very good. Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of five eleven twenty-seven, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Passes unanimously. Resolution authorizing Williamson County mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for installation and provision of electrical services to a water tank owned by Mill Crofton Utility.
Move for approval.
Proper, proper motion, Commissioner Little the second. Property committee?
Uh, property committee, committee was four, four, zero against, as amended.
Okay.
May I submit that amendment?
Yes, please.
Approval of easement is contingent upon receiving a future two-inch water tap from Mill Crofton Utility District of Williamson County at a location of our choosing to be determined at a later date in the complete discretion of Williamson County.
Proper motion? Commissioner Hancock the second? And that's on the board, isn't it? Any, any discussion on the amendment? I see none, you ready to vote on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment of five eleven thirty-one, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes.
All right, the amendment passes, now back to the main resolution of five eleven thirty-one. Uh, any discussion on the resolution as amended? I see none, you ready to vote? Five eleven thirty-one is amended, if you're in favor, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes, one, no.
Resolution passes. Uh, resolution five eleven thirty-five, a resolution to approve the job description of the Emergency Management Agency Director for Williamson County, Tennessee, and approve the appointment of the director of the county mayor. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes the second. Human Resources Committee?
Four, yes, zero against.
Oh, okay. Uh, law enforcement committee?
This was, uh, seven, four, zero against.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Langston. Budget committee?
Budget committee, four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, uh, the mayor has undertaken to reorganize the, uh, Williamson County Emergency, um, Management Agency and, um, combine essentially what were formerly two separate functions into one, and, uh, this is, is merely getting that, uh, that organizational chart, if you will, made official by acceptance by this commission.
Thank you. Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? All in favor of five eleven thirty-five, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-one, yes, one abstain.
Passes. Uh, resolution five eleven thirty-seven, a resolution to approve the appointment of the animal control director by the county mayor. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Green the second. Budget committee?
Budget committee, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
The mayor wanted our, um, seal of approval on this resolution also, and if I might, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Doug Brightwell, the new director, to stand.
Welcome.
He's been here since December the first and doing a superb job. Had a very successful open house Saturday, placed many animals, gave many rabies shots, and microchipped a good many. So, if you have not gotten a chance to go out and visit, uh, please go. You'll be pleased and, and very, uh, thankful that we, uh, are doing such modern things out there, so that's great.
Thank you, welcome. Any questions? I see none. All in favor of five eleven thirty-seven, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
Resolution five eleven thirty-eight, resolution authorizing the Williamson County mayor to enter into an easement with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation for installation of electrical utilities.
Move for, move for approval.
Commissioner Barnwell the second. This didn't go to any committees. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, Middle Tennessee Electric wants to do some, oh, electrical utility work by, near the J. O. Clay, and this just came to our attention, but it does need to be approved so they can get on with the work and give better service.
Very good. Any questions? I see none, you ready to vote? Five eleven thirty-eight, if you're in favor, push the yes button? Opposed, your no button? Anyone wishing to change their vote, do so at this time? Record the vote, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-two, yes, zero, no.
All right, that concludes anything on the agenda, uh, the resolution passes.